...permits, accessibility, utilities, and other city services, including emergency response, rezone to park.
Okay, that's your input, and again, we are going to postpone this at your recommendation because of your 60 pages of remendment or recommendations, and when we get a chance to read those, then we'll look at it again.
Well, you mentioned it, so I picked up.
Okay, bottom of page 76. It isn't currently leased, block five? Retain ownership, and it's available for lease?
It is.
It is available for lease, or it is leased?
It is available for lease.
Okay.
And on that one, I'd like to provide conservation broadly on the street.
Okay. Carol, can you, we're gonna, we're gonna go through yours.
I'm skipping all the other ones, I'm just commenting on the ones that you were commenting on, so you know.
Okay. All right. Block nine, is that, isn't that the part that was gonna be coast guard?
It is, in the process.
And we put retain ownership, so is that, I think that we were going to, and again, it says polar seafoods replat, so retain ownership and lease?
Mm-hmm.
And then my last question mark is on page 80, on the DOT, public facilities, maintenance shop, and storage lot, and I think at the end, we were gonna, rezoned a UR because of surrounding properties, but I have a R2 question mark, and is there more urban residential around it than?
Areas.
R2, okay. Oh, here's where it was, priorities, page 81, which we added, and, but the second one just says an outdoor sports arena, where we were a little more detailed, a covered basketball court slash skating rink on Boulder Field, not just an outdoor sports arena anywhere.
So, can I, 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 we can gladly put that, but from that meeting previous to the council and the previous to you guys, it was to have the ability for somebody to come forward and say, you know, either the city's gonna build it, but maybe Boulder Field's not where they want it, maybe they wanna put it out at Fort Raymond, or they can pick, you know, they can work on having a different location if they want, or if the city sees fit. So, we're, I mean, we're more than happy to put on Boulder Field.
Yeah, I think we wanted our recommendation to be specific.
Yeah, and, and I think we wanted it to be city-owned, so that our residents can use it, and we don't have to ask permission from another entity like we have to for our gyms. So, a city, a city-owned covered basketball court slash skating rink, seasons, on Boulder Field.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, I could, I like what it says.
You liked outdoor sports arena? Just blown outdoor sports arena?
Right, priority is getting something like that, but, um...
Again, council's probably gonna change it to that, because that was their recommendation, so they're gonna change ours.
Right.
But I want them to know what ours was.
Okay, well, I mean, again, it's like Carol says, that's yours, I just wanna say, I'm, obviously you wanna change it, you wanna, as two people spoken off, I'm spoken up, speaking up the other direction, I just was, was wondering where anybody else felt about it, because it's a majority thing.
Well, I, I looked at some of the, um...
I know what you wanted, to me.
No, no, no.
I wonder what these guys say. What do you guys say? Should it be, are we specifically, as planning zoning, specifically require, looking at that our sports arena needs to be city-owned, or are we recommending a priority is to, to give emphasis to get, whether it's city-owned or not, to get a covered sports arena, or a sports arena?
Both city-owned and covered.
Yep.
See, you're saying city-owned.
And covered.
So, you want it city-owned?
Yeah.
So, if somebody privately came in and said, "I wanna build this ice rink," you wouldn't want to help them a lot?
Well, if I was saying the city, that would be a choice on my part to allow it or not allow it.
We're, we're making recommendations, and he was, got that.
I'm not partial to it being city-owned, I'd like more private businesses, but because a lot of times you'll wind up having somebody spending more money and be more inventive if you were a business owner out there that does this for a professional or a living, and then you have less people from the city having to maintain it.
Right.
So, and, you know, but to having that...
But that's, that's also part of my thing, is, is, I mean, you have a city-owned, that means the city maintains it and runs it and all that kinda stuff, and how much can we afford, but there's only 3,200 of us, and only a third of those make money, or whatever. I mean, I just, I go look at the library and go, you know, like, holy guys, or...
But I'm thinking back to, back to what's important to me, and I think if it's privately owned, it limits the amount of kids that can access it.
Correct.
The constituents that I spoke to want something that the residents of our community have...
Easy access.
Easy access and less expensive access.
Right.
I mean, there's gyms in this town, but they're not cheap.
Right.
Okay, and have it in a location that is accessible to most of the citizens of our town, not out the road, or, you know, but also, I looked at the CIP, um...
You mean, like, five miles is too far to go?
Well, where Apex is, where the CIP and the Parks and Rec Department is recommending that Boulder Field, or that they get more electrical and water hookups for more, for selling more sites, and I'd rather see Boulder Field for the residents of the city than for the tourists.
Yeah, we have an awful lot of those.
And the electrical sites are for these upper areas, not Boulder Field.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I don't want any more expansion of tourism, city-owned tourism industry.
And we'll, we'll put Boulder Field, if you guys make that decision, we'll, we'll put it, I just, again, want you to know that you're probably correct, and believe the council's gonna change it. The other thing that keeps coming up when we talk a sports arena, you know, we have lots of input, we have lots of people that say, "Well, I want this," or "I want this," and in the same breath, it turns around on council and says, "Well, we don't, we have ways, we spent way too much money in our budget."
Right.
So, I, I see Tom's point, and I see your point, and we will put outdoor sports arena on Boulder Field, covered basketball court and skating rink.
Because, because our city can afford it.
And I also, just, as a, as me being a citizen, not Jackie Community Development Director or anything, I just want to be really, really clear on the fact of when things start moving forward, that we don't say, "Well, we have gyms, but they're too expensive," because then we're competing with private industry...
Right.
...as a city.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at this facility as being like the new basketball courts out at Forest Acres Park.
Okay.
Not, not a lot of expense or personnel maintenance, other than, you know, getting the graffiti cleaned off, or whatever.
Well, if you got an ice rink, you're gonna have a lot of, you're gonna have a lot of expense.
They, they flood Boulder Field and plow it into an ice rink.
It wouldn't be really bad if we, if we got that hydroplank in.
Yeah, there we go.
Then we could have that ice grading rink.
Yes. All right, I think those were my recommendations.
Isn't it used to flood Boulder Fields for skating rinks?
Yeah.
They did, they did.
When Norton Aylman was more active in there.
Because of, because of insurance purposes, if it's owned by the city and somebody gets hurt, they have the ability to, so when you're talking building, building a skating rink versus flooding Boulder Field, that's a big difference.
All right. Okay.
And I apologize, because I know you were making really copious notes last time, so I did not take copious notes, I knew you would look at all those notes, and I saw you wrote down everything that I had talked about, so...
Okay, yeah, I tried, I tried to take notes.
I don't want you to think that we just totally ignored it.
No, 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 I don't think that.
All right.
Okay, we've got 15 minutes till our next, uh, real board meeting, commission meeting, and I guess we'll be making an amendment to postpone until brought back by staff, or till the time's certain, which is it gonna be?
Well, if you guys postpone it, it should probably be till brought back to staff, because if we're gonna have another work session on it, those changes will have to be incorporated, and we wouldn't make the turnaround for the August 3rd meeting. So, you're looking at more September for us to put it through to council.
I, I'd prefer a date rather than have it open.
Yeah.
So...
I, I'd like it at our next meeting.
I, I can tell you, there's no way we can get it, because here's the reason, if we have a work session on July 20th, and then we, then we have the work session, we put your guys' packet together, at the work session, you make all your changes, then we have to go in and make the changes, and by July 21st, we have to have our agenda to the clerk for the Sep, for the August meeting.
The agenda title, or everything that goes in the packet?
We have to have our agenda title ready.
Yeah.
There's, I'm, I'm just gonna say, there's no way Community Development can get it turned around in two weeks, that, I'm, I'm just telling you, what we've done, just this, has been a huge turnaround for us, and we are, we are not only doing planning and zoning, we are also doing community development, and we are packed.
Okay, so our next work session is the 20th, and so you're saying that...
We could bring it back at your September 7th meeting.
What, why not in August?
Because your August 3rd is your regular meeting, and we cannot continuously, for our, I'm just telling you, if you guys wanna have work sessions and that, we're fully supportive of it, but we cannot continuously have special meeting versus work session, special meeting, work session, special meeting, work session. Our whole day-to-day was nothing but this, we had to put everything else on, on hold. So, I, I know, you're true.
Which is your position as community development and...
Our position is to be, our position is to be administrative to you, and we are being administrative, I'm just saying that we cannot turn around this stuff constantly, because then we are ending up with errors, and we're ending up with stuff missing.
Is there, is there some kind of rush, I mean, what's wrong with September, what's, what makes that difficult? Is there something that this needs to get to the council sooner, is something out there that we don't know about?
It's drawn out for, I feel like we've been working on it a long time, and it's not getting drawn out first.
No, 'cause I mean, like, government goes slow for a reason, it gives people like Carol time to get her comments in, and us to make a, you know, what, exactly what's happened here, we should be able to accommodate, and, I mean, I looked at her comments, she had a lot of good things to clean things up, and I think we need to go through it. So, I don't, I just don't see why September's, like, if there's no some rush that we don't know about, that council needs this sooner, then, then we'll just, we'll just let it take its flow and, and not try and, that's my opinion.
Okay, I'm looking at the calendar, and we have a joint work session with the Flood Board, or no, Historic Preservation, I thought we, I thought we canceled...
It was canceled.
Those are canceled.
All, we, we said two a year.
No, I think it even got, it's a priority thing.
But, so which ones are canceled? 'Cause this is still on our calendar as a joint work session?
For August?
For August, for, 3rd.
It is, that's your second one in the year.
Okay, so you canceled the May one?
Yeah.
Okay, so the August one we are having?
Yes, and it's, as far as I know, right now, HP has not said we want to have it, we have anything to bring forward on it, so...
Okay, so that would be the hour before our regularly scheduled 7:00 PM meeting, our regular meeting?
On the 20th?
On August 3rd.
On August 3rd, yes, sorry, it would be the hour before.
So, then you're saying, ah, okay, we're gonna, okay...
I'm ju, I'm just telling you, we are, we are literally strapped, I, I, I don't know how more ways to put it.
Okay, so then, we will, we will postpone this until the September 7th regular meeting.
And you guys will schedule a work session topic for the July 12th, or 20th meeting?
The land use, the land use, the law table, okay. Postpone.
Have you, have you ended the work session for a break, or...
Yes, yeah, we're, we're taking a break, until our regularly scheduled meeting at 7 o'clock, September 7th.
Is this our third work session on this?
It was like 6.
Yeah, it does, I think it's, I think this was our fifth on this topic?
On the plan, the use plan.
On the municipal land plan.
Yes, that's the fifth, and as far as dwellings and definitions, that's our not...
That's all I needed to know.
All right, I call to order the July 6, 2021, meeting of the Seward Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Verhe, will you lead us in the pledge?
Oh. It's been a long time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
So I'm going to help Corkman tonight, just.
Commissioner Ambrosiani?
Here.
Everyone, I need you to please mute your phone.
No.
Commissioner Gary Sees?
Gary Sees here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here.
Commissioner Swan?
Here.
Commissioner Vegney?
Here.
Commissioner Eklund?
Here.
And Commissioner Charbonneau is excused.
Thank you. At this time, I will take citizens' comments on any subject except those items scheduled for public hearing. Those who have been signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Time is limited to three minutes per speaker and 36 minutes total for this agenda item. Do we have anyone signed in for items not scheduled for public hearing?
Madam Chair, we have Carol Griswold.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Carol Griswold, inside city limits. I was very consumed with the municipal land use plan, which I received on Friday and worked steadily through the busy weekend, and so I don't have my usual prepared comments. I did have a few thoughts that I'd like to share with you, and you already heard that I would like P and Z to consider postponing the municipal land use plan and have another work session and schedule another meeting. But I'd also like to ask you to do that for the Title 15 definitions because as a layperson, I think the way it was presented is still very confusing, and I would really love to devote more time to that in a more organized fashion so I can and the other public can clearly see what significant changes, and there are many significant changes being made. Would you please consider postponing that as well? Government does move slowly, and there's a reason for that, and this is how we can clarity and have everybody on the same page. Another thought I had is a big thank you to all of you for being here on this incredibly busy Fourth of July week, and it made me think that perhaps you could consider taking a break. Don't have meetings in June, July, and August. Let planning, maybe development, do some catch-up work. They are so incredibly busy. This packet, for example, is a jawbreaker. It's huge, and we are all busy. There's very few public members participating because we are working, we are busy, summered, there's people all over the place you have to deal with. So why not take a break? A lot of other boards and commissions do that. Wouldn't you like that? I think so. I would. And I had something else, but I don't know what I have. Anyway, thank you so much. This is an incredible amount of work you're following through, and we are making some progress, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed in for item four, citizens' comments?
Madam Chair, we do not have anybody else signed in.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on any item other than those scheduled for public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close citizens' comments. That takes us to the approval of Agenda and Consent Agenda. Did I get a motion from the commission?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Swan, second by Sullivan. Is there any discussion or amendments, deletions, additions to the Agenda or Consent Agenda?
I'd like to recommend that we postpone Resolution 2021-016 to our, what's the date?
September 7th.
September 7th meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Swan, second by Sullivan, to postpone new business item 9 to Resolution 2021-016 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska, recommending city council adoption of the Municipal Lands Inventory and Management Plan. Discussion before we vote on the amendment to the Agenda? All right, and we're still on roll call even though we don't have anybody on Zoom tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Madam Chair, mending, removal, or postponement of Resolution 2021-016 to the September 7th meeting. Verhe?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Sees?
Yes.
Ambrosiani?
Yes.
And Chair Eklund?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Any other discussion of the main motion on approval of Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it to a roll call vote on this item.
Ambrosiani?
Yes.
This is the approval of the Agenda and Consent, by the way. Swan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Verhe?
Yes.
And Sees?
Yes.
Chair Eklund?
Yes.
The approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. On the Consent Agenda tonight is the approval of the May 4 regular meeting minutes and the approval of the May 20 meeting minutes.
Thank you. That takes us to item 6, Special Reports and Presentations, a city administration report.
Madam Chair, first I'd like to introduce our city manager, Jeanette Bauer, so that all the commissioners can see her face and know who she is. She's been great. We've been great working together, and it's exciting that she's even attending one of our meetings. I want to, like I said earlier, our department is working, you know, with two different hats, and so bear with us as we move through these very large packets and these very large changes that are coming forward. So if you have any questions, you know, we're always there. You can call us and talk to us about it. One of the things I want to point out is if you see the size of our packets, we have printed those at least seven times for each one of you. So we're talking massive amount of printing. I'm going to work with our IT department to get you all laptops so we can get away from printing this stuff. We have so much paper going out of our office, and it is costing us a lot for our copies. So we're going to try to streamline things. Gary will ease you into it, I promise. We're also, in the next couple of weeks, we're hoping to introduce a Facebook page that's all about community development, what we're working on, how we're working on it, and giving the citizens the ability to possibly attend work sessions so that they know in advance. We've noticed that Facebook is definitely how everybody operates lately.
Not everybody.
Well, not everybody, but how people operate, so we're going to try to make it a little clearer. And we're also going to be working on updating the webpage to give easy links for everyone. Without anything else, I just want to say congratulations to Lydia Jacoby. We want to make sure that we all stand behind her, and anything that you guys need from us, you know where we are.
Yeah. That's great.
Any follow-up questions for administration? I just think that making less copies will save you time, but I'm hoping that you're developing a Facebook page and hyperlinking our webpage is not you two doing that, but the IT department doing that. Okay. Thank you, because you've got enough on your plate. All right. So there, any other reports, announcements, or presentations tonight?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, that takes us to item 7. Nothing under A. Public hearing under B is for new business items requiring a public hearing, and the first one is Resolution 2021-014 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska, recommending Kenai Peninsula Borough approval of the preliminary right-of-way acquisition plat for the Seward Airport on various legals located in Section 2 and 3, Township 1 South, Range 1 West, and Section 34 and 35, Township 1 North, Range 1 West, Seward Meridian Southwest, that point known as Seward Airport, physical location 2310 Airport Road. And the applicant, I'm going to give them 10 minutes, then I'm going to give the public five minutes to speak each, and if you had questions, I'm going to ask the applicant to note those questions as much as they can and respond to them during the rebuttal after the public gets to speak.
And just for those on the line, I believe they're all the applicants, and we possibly have the Flood Board, Stephanie Presley, on the telephone for questions. You guys are all off of mute, so if you will speak one at a time when the chair gives you direction.
But that will be for a total of 10 minutes for all of the applicants. So you're off mute, and please state your name and address or business title for the record, and go ahead. Hopefully, you've chosen who's speaking first, second, third, and fourth. Are you there?
Yes, this is Brian Hanson, PDC Engineers. We're the consultants on board to design the airport improvements. We also prepared the plots that you guys are reviewing. We appreciate the opportunity to speak. I just have a few comments, and then I'll pass it over to Janelle if she would like to say a word or two. So before you, we have two parcel plots. We call them right-of-way, R O W documents that are being reviewed, or actually, it's three, sorry, the CAP parcel, the Lira parcel, and then the other parcel over the bay. This is in support of the project at the Seward Airport to improve pavement strength out there as well as lighting improvements, make the airport safer. These parcel acquisitions are in support of that project. The CAP parcel, which is up closer to the road, is for a tree clearing and selective tree clearing in that area for navigation needs. The Lira parcel, which is down closer to the improvements, is for FAA requirements to meet the object-free area requirements. The airport DOT is required to control that ground and the airspace a lot of it to avoid future conflict aircraft and parcel owners. And the parcel over the water is for navigation, we'll call it, it's sort of easement to protect that airspace off the end of the runway for safe navigation to and from the airport. And with that, I will pass it over to Janelle if she wants to say anything. Again, I'm Brian Hanson, PDC Engineers, and we're the consultant doing the work for DOT. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. This is Janelle Brinkman with the DOT. I'm the Aviation Design Group Chief and am just filling in for Joey Vaughn, who's the project manager while she's out this week. I don't have anything else to add at this time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from DOT or the consultants, or is Stephanie from the Flood Board online?
I am online, but I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, Stephanie. Who else was speaking?
Edgar Tina Harrow with PDC. I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
This is Craig Ranson with PDC. I'm the surveyor, and I prepared the plat.
Thank you for being online if we have any questions.
Bob Kiner with DOT.
Who was the last one with DOT?
Bob Kiner, Right-of-Way Engineering Supervisor with DOT, and I don't have any data at this time. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I will ask if there's anyone signed in to speak on public hearing for item Resolution 2021-014. Do you have anyone signed in?
Madam Chair, we do. We have Leigh Olson.
I'm not signed in over.
I'll open it up for anyone that hasn't signed in after those that have signed in. Mr. Olson, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I am Leigh Olson. I live on Phoenix, Barwell in Phoenix. I have property adjacent to the airport. Yeah, I mean, today, somebody said, hey, do you know they're going to cut all your trees around your property? Nobody informed me of anything that was going on. I'm sure she said she sent me something, but I'm kind of busy, and I must have missed it. But if we could put it off your vote tonight where I could maybe look at it, I mean, it seems like somebody might have at least asked, what do you think? But to cut all the trees right up to my property just makes me sick. I mean, there's bald eagles we've been viewing for years. I was told today they were going to fill the pond in, and I don't know if that's true. I mean, it's just hard to believe they'd cut all the trees down with the eagle's nests and owls. I don't know what's true. Is there somebody there I can ask?
At the end of all the public hearings, I've asked the applicants to respond to questions, so I'm hoping they took questions about the cutting of the trees and filling the pond and notification, okay?
No, nobody had none.
Okay. Thank you. And at this time, is there anyone else signed in to speak?
Madam Chair, we have Carol Griswold.
Ms. Griswold, please state your name and address for the record.
Carol Griswold, inside city limits. This public hearing should be postponed due to improper public notice. The public notice sign was posted that no information was available at community development, the DOT website, Solstice Consulting, or DOT staff. No one I talked to, including an adjacent property owner and several airport lessees, received the written notification. The packet containing the resolution was not posted to the city website and was only emailed to the public today. What is the point of this public hearing if the public has no say in whether or not DOT should purchase and clear civil patrol property, fill a slice of the Lira property, or own a chunk of city-owned tidelands? If the public does have a say, I'm opposed to all of these acquisitions. These acquisitions, like the rest of the project, will result in massive environmental impacts of the estuary, coastal wetlands, ponds, and forests. It will destroy eagle and owl nests in the forest, Antarctic tern nests at the beach, disrupt migratory birds, overwintering swans, wildlife, and salmon. Abandoning the long runway and creating a giant channel through the jurisdictional winged sedge for a float pond will greatly increase flooding potential of the airport and surrounding infrastructure, including the port. Numerous public meetings since 2008 have shown overwhelming support to retain the Crosswind Runway 1634 and to retain and restore the existing Long Runway 1331. Alternative 2.2 does not meet the communities and stakeholders' expressed needs. It will compromise disaster relief with C-130s and will forever prevent the use of the existing Crosswind Runway 1632 and Long Runway 1331. Council, supported by the Ad Hoc Seward Airport Committee, approved in 2019 state and federal legislative priorities by Resolutions 2019-111 and 115 to request that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers design and construct a flood damage control project to protect the airport runways and property from flooding, and the State of Alaska DOT and FAA to repair and restore the existing runway 1331 in order to accommodate larger aircraft and provide effective disaster response. I served on the Seward Airport Ad Hoc Committee. I support an inter-agency collaboration to construct a flood damage control project to protect the existing runways and property from flooding and minimize habitat destruction. I do not support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed in to speak under the public hearing item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Bob Linville. I've been inside the city. Yeah, I've been involved in this pretty much all the way through, like Carol said. I just heard about this meeting today, so I wasn't able to prepare anything. I wondered if any of you Planning and Zoning Commissioners were involved in that airport public process in the last 10 years? Yeah, it was, I'd ask because I'm going to characterize it as probably the least, just, the public had the least say-so of any process that I've seen in my life. And I've been involved in Seward public processes for about 40 years, and this is over an issue that really is crucial to the town. It involves whether we can have commercial air service here or not, because we had testimony during the process from Kenai Air, and said they'd like to come in here in the summer, and they weren't going to be able to land one of their loaded planes on the shorter runway. And the state will reply that, well, we can't fund the longer runway. Well, that doesn't really fix the problem that we'd have when we can't have a loaded plane come in here for commercial air service. That was just one issue of, I'd say, Carol ran through just the beginnings of it too. I mean, it is the most valuable bird habitat we have both ends of the runway. The bird pond is the only bird pond at the head of the bay, and it's, there's no need to bolo's it full and then make a runway out of it. That's the best alternative that the state shows, and they did it pretty much contrary to everybody that spoke to them. The last meeting we had was in the fall, I think, was it last year? We had like a three-hour meeting, and it was totally emotional. I've never seen a meeting where 100% of the local people are all on the same side, but we all were. It went on for like three hours, and everybody was just viscerally opposed to this alternative. So here we are. I mean, nothing we've done has made any difference. These are the people who were on the line there. I didn't recognize the names. I don't know if they're at the meeting or not, but the engineer that designed this wasn't one of the names I heard there. So I think it's just like they've picked an alternative, and that's what we're going to get. The public process made no difference. It's a huge issue. It's a huge issue for this town. It also allows the river to fill up, start filling up this side of the bay. Eventually, that makes a difference to our port. They totally dissed that. I never even recall any, that they gave that any attention at all. But that river, if you don't, what, what we wanted was to build up the existing runway and repave it. So you have, it's 1,200 feet longer if you do that. And it keeps the river where it is. And that river's going to fill up, and we're, we're all behind dikes in this town, pretty much. Everywhere you go is that. And if you take a dike away, that portion of land is going to get filled up with river material. And that's what's going to happen. When they take the dike away, the river's going to come right along a new alignment, even the first year or a few years thereafter, after the first big flood, and start building material straight into the bay on this side. I don't really want to use up any more of my time talking about all the things that are wrong with this, and I would like to urge the city, especially at this meeting, to book down this resolution or at least postpone it. And consider, this is first I've seen, the new city manager, welcome, but consider having a discussion in the city again of taking control of the airport, because I don't know any other way for us to have an effect other than to do that. And we never really did look into that. I mean, there is costs to be analyzed there. We didn't really do that. So we're just letting this thing go on through at this point, if you agree to it. But there's work to be done, and it's a huge issue for the future of transportation options and staff, economically, environmentally, you know. Please at least postpone it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else signed in under this item?
Madam Chair, there is not.
Is there anyone else in City Hall that wishes to speak on this resolution? Is there any, anybody, are we still doing Zoom call-in or phone calls in?
No, we're not, I'm sure.
Okay. All right. So I will close public hearing at this time and bring it back to the commission for a motion to open discussion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, where is it? To approve.
2112.
Resolution 21, 2021-14.
14, yes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Ambrosiani, second by Swan. I'll open dis, wait, oh, I forgot one thing. The rebuttal by the DOT. So we've got a motion on the floor, which is good. We can have that. We can continue this discussion, and that will open it up for us to ask the applicant questions as well. Okay? All right. So I'm sorry, DOT, and consultants, I didn't give you a chance to rebut or answer any of the questions that the public had. So I'm going to open the line for you to ask those questions. Yeah, and we'll, it's just a five-minute rebuttal. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Brian Hanson. We heard, we were put on mute, and we heard two, I believe, two comments.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct?
Madam Chair, if you can repeat what Ms. Griswold had asked, that's what they, the part they missed. Or, I'm sorry, not Griswold, Mr. Olson.
Mr. Olson, the questions, Mr. Olson asked, okay. Mr. Olson was the first speaker, and he mentioned that today was the first he knew about this resolution that was, is before us tonight. On the first, he heard about trees being cut right up to his property. And he also heard that the pond was going to be filled in. And so I ask what kind of, I get, I think I want to know what kind of notice you provided, and is the pond going to be filled in?
Thank you for the, for talking in. I believe the pond you're talking about is on the north end near the road. If I'm not mistaken, if I am, please correct me. There were no plans that I know of to fill that pond in. That's where they get water, I believe, for firefighting activities and other activities. We, we've been working on this project since 2014. I have not personally been, been there as the team, team that's present today. But it has been worked on for quite a long time. It's been through the FAA public process as well as, it's going through permitting process as well. Now, I apologize if you guys, if this is the first you've heard on, on right-of-way stuff. This is part of the process we have to go through with the City of Seward is, is prepare plots and submit those. If there is a governing body like Seward, we submit those to the City of Seward for their review and approval. Normally, DOT would just typically go out to the property owners at this point in the, in the project. But we're happy to, you know, happy to go to the city and tell them what we're doing and be a part of the process. It's a bit concerning to me about that you guys don't feel that, that I haven't been listened to. I apologize for that. I think DOT and, and everybody involved has tried to involve the public as much as they can and tried to listen to them. We also have to take into consideration, you know, where the funding is coming from and, and their rules and regulations, you know, for clearances and how we spend the money and what we're going to do versus what we're not allowed to do with, with, you know, federal obligated dollars. So right now, where we're at in the process is, the environmental document has been signed. It was signed, the signing of no significant impact was signed in March of 2020, after the, the comment period closed. We then were kind of on hiatus for a little bit. We finalized or started to finalize the design. We've went through another review and have some comments to review, to address there. And then we started the right-of-way phase of the project, which is kind of what you're, what you're seeing here. And I guess that's, that's what I have to say at this point in, in response. If we do have a project website out there, it doesn't look as though it's been updated at all from, from the public site, but it is fairly up to date with, with the plans and stuff. There's also a contact email on there where you can send in comments, and we will try to address them as best we can. And we are, you know, we're still accepting comments. Some comments we're, you know, we'll have to just address, and it may be funding it to some other issue, but, but we will try to address all comments if we can. And I won't, I won't promise another public meeting, but it sounds like, you know, at least a project update needs to go out to the public. And, and now that we have a little bit better idea of where the design is headed and what things are looking like and what things are in versus out, I think we can share that with the public and more comments. So appreciate the opportunity to comment. I don't know if anybody else on the DOT side would like to add anything.
Thank you. Do you know how much time we have left?
20 seconds.
20 seconds. Anybody have any 20, I'll give you 20 seconds from the time I say go. Okay. Hearing no one, I'm going to bring it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for discussion. And we may have questions for you, so I'm going to leave you unmuted. And those of you that want to answer, if you unmute and answer, and the others that are just listening, please stay muted. Okay. Commissioner Ambrosiani, since you.
I'm administrator.
Oh, staff report, please. Thank you, Vice Chair, for keeping me in line.
Sorry. I was like, hey, she's just going to keep going.
Yeah, that's right.
So in front of you this evening is resolution 2021-14. This application was submitted, preliminary plat was submitted by Alaska DOT. The plating action acquires parcel one, which is owned by the Civil Air Patrol. Parcel four, which is owned by the Lear family, and I'm going to scroll up to there so it's visible here, too. It's owned by the Lear Family Limited Parcel, or Partnership. And parcel five is owned by the City of Seward. The section two and three in section 3435 of the Seward room, the point known as the Seward Airport. This is to create a new right-of-way for the runway 1634, which will be shifted, lengthened, and raised above the 100-year flood level. The Seward Airport has needed to make much, many improvements for some time now and will substantially reduce the damage to the airport it's experiencing from re-encurrent flooding and meet the FFA design standards based on the current aircraft utilizing the airport and forecast aviation needs. The current airport, currently, the runway lighting is old and also needs replaced. Much of the pavement needs to be rehabilitated and/or replaced, and testing has revealed a weakened embankment under the pavement of runway 1331, necessitating a restriction of allowable aircrafts for those under 12,500 pounds. The Delta River adjacent to the airport has been rising relative to the airport elevations, increasing the frequency and severity of overtopping floods. The main runway is now too low and in the direct path of the river, which has been repeatedly damaged due to high-water events. The three alternatives were given during, were evaluated during the scope and environmental process. The current project scope corresponds with alternative 2.2. In the approved environmental assessment, alternative 2.2 had the most advantages and the least number of disadvantages. In our review, the property is zoned industrial. The amount of the land to be acquired is 38.224 acres from parcel one, 1.986 acres from parcel four, and 25.39 acres from parcel five. There are no utilities on these, on these parcels. Track F is to be serviced by the existing public utilities that maintain streets and the hydrant. The existing use, the three parcels currently do not have any development and are part of the Seward tidelands. The access, the parcels will not have vehicular access, but will only provide an extended right-of-way for the airport to shift, lengthen, and raise the runway 1634. These lots are within the AB flood zone. We did meet public hearing requirements. We sent out notices of this public hearing as well as posted on the property. We did it to owners, and the owners, then we, in our letter, we stated that the owners or leases were to be organized or recognized, and we did that within the 300-foot. We noticed the leaseholders by placing our sign at the, the entry there. So, because we don't have a list of the leases, we just sent out to the owners. We did send out 21 letters for the airport replat.
Is that the end of your staff report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will open discussion and start with Commissioner Ambrosiani, who made the motion. But I'm, before we go there, I'm trying to find this runway 1634 on these maps. This says 1331, so this shortened one with the little ovals, that's 1634? Okay. All right. Commissioner Ambrosiani?
I, thank you. I have a couple of clarifying questions. Is it, my understanding that the plan that DOT is proposing is to extend runway 1634, to raise and extend 1634, but then to decrease the length of 1331?
You would have to ask the applicant.
Let's turn that to someone from the consultant or DOT. Are you going to shorten 1331, no, lengthen 1331 and shorten 1632? Nope, the other way around?
Reverse it.
Other way around.
Yeah, so this is Brian Hanson, PDC engineers. The, the currently, you know, shorter runway will be extended to 3,300 feet, and the, the longer main runway now that's closer to the river, 1331, will be closed as part of the project. So, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So basically, we're going to be downsized, your plan is to downsize us to one runway. Currently, 1331 is how many feet long?
That's a question.
Four thousand.
Four thousand?
Yeah, it's a little bit over 4,000 feet.
Sir, we can't have that out, we're sorry.
Okay, so, so overall, this is going to decrease our ability to land aircraft here in Seward? And it, can you give me a reason why that's to our benefit?
As, so the benefit is, right now, the runway gets overtopped more frequently. I've flooded two or three times last year alone. The runway closer to the apron gets it out of the floodplain area. We actually have mapped all of the floodplain through a hydraulic and hydrology consultant. So there is a flood zone, floodway out there. We, the new embankment, when it's raised, will be above your flood, and outside of that, we're going to be armoring that with a pretty large rock that's, that's seated down below the scour depth, which would be the depth where the, the river can remove material. So overall, you're going to have, correct, you're going to lose one runway, but you're going to have a better, more reliable airport when we're done. It's going to be one runway protected, new lighting. The geometry of the taxiways will match the new advisory circulars. It, it gets it out of that channel where the river is constantly trying to eat into the, into the runway.
And then basically, there would be no opportunity to expand air service in Seward at this location?
The ultimate airport layout plan that we're producing as part of a project shows the near-term development as a single runway with, at 3,300 feet, which is kind of the community standard. It does also, Edgar can correct me if I'm wrong, but we do show future development of, I believe, a 600-foot extension when the need arises. The 300-foot runway is not going to prohibit aircraft from landing that are capable of doing that. It, it becomes an operator choice at that point. You know, if you get people like Keen Eye or Right Air, you know, there's a whole number of air services wanting to fly into places. I've seen a Navajo land on 2,000 feet fully loaded, so even though the, the service on it says, you know, 2,800 to 3,000 feet. So it's, it's not going to prohibit people from landing there. We're also not, right now, you're load limited at that airport because of the, because of the embankment and the structural section of the pavement. We're actually building a little bit stronger pavement that will meet. It's basically a B2 category of aircraft, so up to, I want to say, up to 50 or so feet wingspan, 50-plus, and then the B has to do with the approach speed, so how fast. And then, the B has to do with the approach speed, so how fast they approach, so, except, I wanna say, a hundred knots is the approach speed.
My last question, will this impact the current air medevac planes that are coming in?
No, not that we're, we've reached out to them, and no, we do not believe that they will be impacted at all.
How much runway does a King Air need? How much runway does a King Air need to land? Twin engine?
For landing a King Air?
Yeah.
So typically, typically, the landing distance is not gonna be the issue. Normally, it's gonna be takeoff distance.
Okay.
And King Airs, King Airs can operate out of thirty-three hundred feet. They do it all the time, all over the state. You're not gonna get a Lear jet in there, but even at four thousand, you probably weren't getting very many Lear's, if any. But a King Air will continue to be able to operate out of Seward. And even during construction, we're maintaining better runway lengths out there so that medevacs can still, if they need to, aircrafts and helicopter medevacs can still get into the Seward Airport during construction.
Okay. Commissioner Swan?
I have no comment.
No comment? Commissioner Sullivan, did you have any comments?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, thank you. My question is, you have folks that wanna fly in. I didn't recognize the names of those organizations that plan on coming in. Are they ones that are gonna necessarily, is it more of a touristy thing, or are they coming in to benefit Seward? Or is it, what's the purpose of that, other than maybe improving the runway? But I just wanted to see what the long-term benefit of these folks coming in.
Is that a question for DOT?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, it is for DOT, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, sorry, this is Brian Hanson again. I don't think we have a list of people that wanna fly in. I do know that, as one of the members of the public commented, I believe it was Kenai Air Service or somebody that indicated that they may be interested in service into Seward. So I do not have anyone specific that has indicated they would start scheduled service or, you know, do this or that based on the runway, you know, being changed.
Okay, thank you.
Neither, either way, I don't have a, you know.
Commissioner Verhae, did you have any questions?
I was just curious, you mentioned Brian, DOT, or the engineer, pardon me, mentioned the website with project updates. Was that just Alaska DOT, or how can we get that info?
Yes, I could send it out, I could forward it along.
Okay.
And I put it in here. But yes, there is a project website.
Brian, I can read it off if someone wants to write it down there.
Sure.
Yeah, Janelle will read the website off.
Yes, it's www.dot.state.ak.us/creg/cedairport, and that's all together, Seward Airport, forward slash.
Thank you. Thank you much. Commissioner Sees, did you have any questions?
Not at this time.
I have a question for administration. I believe that the Ports and Port and Commerce Commission, which is an advisory commission to the council, was heavily involved in the whole improvement to the Seward Airport. And I don't really see where they have given any comment on this resolution before us tonight. Did you receive anything from the Port and Commerce?
They are on hiatus, and then on top of it, because it's a preliminary plat, it's brought forward to planning and zoning. The decisions and the interaction back and forth with PACAB, and I believe they had a committee formed.
Yes, they did.
We didn't have anything to do with that on our side. It was just the preliminary plat that we brought forward. And knowing that they are on hiatus, we sent out notices, just like we do for everything, and have not received anything. But again, they are on hiatus.
Is there a rush on this preliminary plat approval?
It will take some time. If it is postponed this evening, then it would have to be brought back forward at your August or whatever you postponed it to. And then it has to go from there to council, and then from council to planning and zoning, borough, borough planning and zoning. So you're looking at, you know, six months.
But is there a rush? I guess this would be my question for the applicant. When were you planning on starting the work that this plat would approve?
Madam Chair, this is Brian Hanson. We are, right now, in the right-of-way phase, and then we have, I believe, two or three permits we're trying to obtain. We anticipate having those in the four-to-six-month timeframe, and then the project would bid out this winter, late fall, early winter, for summer construction. And just if I could add, we, I apologize for interrupting, if I could add, we have been in discussions with, not the Seward Port Commission, but Alaska Railroad, who owns adjacent property there, and their plans, I think, that involve the port, so.
So work wouldn't begin until the summer of 2022? If you get all your permits and everything? Okay.
Correct, but we cannot advertise until we have all right-of-way in hand and permits and all of that. So we need at least four months ahead of summer construction.
Okay.
To advertise and et cetera.
All right. Another question for administration. When does PACAB, which is Port and Commerce Advisory Board, when does that come off of hiatus?
They come back in September.
I know that they've put a lot of work into the Seward Airport as part of their role for our Port and Commerce. And I would, I personally am not for voting yes on this until I hear from the Port and Commerce Advisory Board.
I feel the same way.
I, for the few things that were mentioned, you know, cutting trees and which, if you're trying to hold the land together, doing that, to me, just seems kind of opposite. And if you're putting down these rocks, why can't we do all of that on the longer runway and improve the longer runway? And why can't we dredge the river? There's a bunch of things that I think can be taken into consideration to improve our airport in such a way that we could get at least some weekly scheduled air service and not ever deter any of our medical response or emergency response. It isn't only for the hospital or medical, it's for, when Seward gets cut off by avalanche, snow, wind, ice, rain, storm, earthquake, that's the way we can get supplies in, and I would hate to lose the ability for our community to receive that help. So, any other discussion? Commissioner Swan?
Yeah, and you brought up a couple of points right there. I mean, right now, we have an airport that gets flooded and the long runway goes out of service for periods of time. The short runway is not long enough at its current length to land a King Air. But the extensions that they're putting on, what they're gonna build, raises it up and extends it so that exactly what you just said can occur at any time. And I think there's been a lot of process, and this is probably a ten-year process. And when they've gone through the things, and I think they've gone through a lot of public hearing, and I have, I believe that the people that go through this are not trying to work against the public. They've come up with the monies available, the best alternative that they can come up with with our needs, and have the ability to add planning in, the ability to add this extra six-hundred feet in the future when funds and needs occur. I mean, we, so, I mean, I don't know how we can start, I mean, you're talking about dredging, you cannot dredge at this end of the river. It fills up. That's why Medco isn't a big hole going to China, because they dig it out every year, it fills in. Same thing down here, I mean, it's, the whole valley floor is raising, the end of the bay is filling in, and at some point in time, we have to do something here, and I guess, you know, putting up a barrier just means you're gonna move the water to another area. I guess I'm understanding the complexity of why trying to maintain the two runways at this point in time would be difficult. And I think that the project needs to move forward, because we're actually in a vulnerable state as we are by having a runway, a long runway that can be out of service at any point in time, and a short runway that is too short for a lot of airplanes. But, you know, thirty-three hundred feet is, will handle significant-sized airplanes, especially when it's reinforced to handle the heavier weights. Because the long rate and runway, even as right now, those planes that you're saying, oh, we have an emergency, let's land these planes, I'm sorry, the runway doesn't support those weights.
Excuse me?
So, and, right, but you can't, you know, you can't if you don't have a runway either. So, I mean, that's not.
Point of order, point of order, the time for the back and forth is over.
Anyway, I want to, I mean, there are more opportunities, there's plenty more opportunities ahead for continuing public comment, and they've gone through a lot of them. I think it needs to move forward.
A question, administration, the hiatus ends in September, so their first meeting, PACAB's first meeting is scheduled for September?
Let me just double-check on the calendar, so.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone it until we can hear from PACAB. And DOT, or Brian, their consultant, said they need at least four months headway before they'll start work. So I think if we allow PACAB to do their work that they've been assigned to do, and they've been working on this for a couple of years, I, as a commissioner, know that they've been working on it, but I haven't been seriously involved in their, in their work. So I'd like to hear from them. And so if we can postpone this resolution till they have a regular meeting and we can get this on their agenda for a discussion item or some sort of an input from them.
Joint work session, maybe?
Still working on giving the calendar for that, sorry. PACAB's first meeting is September first at 12:00 p.m.
September first, and they have one a month?
They have two a month.
Two regular meetings a month?
They have a regular meeting and then a work session, so their first one, September first would be their regular meeting, September fifteenth would be their second, or their work session, and they're from 12 to 2.
And our first meeting in October is, well, I wanna give them a chance, I mean, because they're gonna have an agenda.
It would be October fifth.
October fifth, and then our work session and a joint work session with Port and Commerce is scheduled for October nineteenth. Okay, and if we have, bring this back to our November second meeting, that gives them December, January, February, March, four months. I think that would be adequate time for this work. Does this preliminary plat, no, it goes to the borough, doesn't it?
No, it goes to council, because it involves city land, yeah.
Oh, of course. So in November, goes to council, and December goes to the borough, and January or February, March, April, May, June.
Yeah, and just so you know, I mean, the preliminary plat, replat that you guys just did for the fire department is now just being heard. And we did that a couple of months ago through planning, through your guys, now it's in the borough's hands, so.
And it went through council as well? And it was?
No, because it, or yes, I'm sorry, that did.
So it was two months?
Two months, and then now they're just being able to bring it forward to the planning.
We had it on our last meeting.
Yeah.
So it's done, yeah.
So is there a way to move this forward with comments for the city council? I mean, is there something we can do so it moves forward, but still has comments from the public and stuff kind of attached to it, so that when it gets to city council, it's?
Well, our minutes item would be in the packet. Would the public hearing comments go in the council packet?
Yes.
With this item?
A copy of the draft minutes would be in the packet, as well as the resolution and any changes that you make to the resolution or requests.
I mean, I guess my thought is that the, most of the comments have to do with whether this project should go forward as is at all compared to, it's not, I'm gonna try to say this. I mean, it sounds to me like if it goes forward, it's, I'll take back those thoughts, I'm not.
Okay. If you come to consensus on, we'll bring it back, okay.
Madam Chairman, this is Brian, may I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Regarding schedule?
Yes, regarding schedule.
I had indicated, yeah, I apologize for interrupting your discussions, but, so, in order for us to move forward with the right-of-way, we have to have approval or disapproval, whatever, a decision, I guess, from your commission. And then it's gonna take us a minimum of, you know, probably two to three months to actually acquire that right-of-way. We have to, some of it's easier than others, but, and then that's kind of when our four-month clock kind of starts to advertise and get bids and get all the necessary paperwork. So if we're waiting until December essentially to get information, that will likely delay the project another year for us. So I just throw that out for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and see where this motion goes, but I'd like to make a motion to postpone, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this resolution and bring it back to. back to the Planning and Zoning Commission at our October 5th meeting. I'll second your motion. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. And if there's no discussion, we'll go to a roll call vote on the motion. Is any discussion?
My only discussion is, I guess, I do have discussion there, I mean, there is an opportunity because this same project goes to the city council, and so there's bring comments in and get information from Pat Cab. I mean, Pat Cab can provide, they are in existence to provide the city council information, they're not in existence to provide us with information. So, Pat Cab will, should have, their opportunity to work directly with city council to get whatever they've been working on, that's their avenue is to go directly to city council, not to us. And I think it's probably actually, I don't want to say inappropriate, but not necessary to get for us to have Pat Cab's comments. In fact, most of these comments that are coming from the public are really more oriented to that, we're just working on right-of-way stuff for a project that's moving forward. And if there's any, you know, if there's any issue, I mean, most of the issues I heard about was we don't want to lose runway, the long runway. But we're actually working on, are these right-aways appropriate for the construction that they're trying to move forward with?
So, I, I'm just thinking of the timeline, and if Pat Cab is on hiatus, I don't know if they have the right political area timeline where they can give a recommendation to council. This would go to council at its next meeting, and I really think that Pat Cab, because of all the work they've done on it, because of all of everything, I think that, that I don't, I, I don't want this to move forward until council can hear from Pat Cab, till we can hear from Pat Cab, and that would then go to council. I see Administration has her hand up.
I, I was just gonna add that regardless, I mean, we can't direct Pat Cab, of course, like Mr. Swan said, so, it would still be laying on the council to make that decision on whether they wanted Pat Cab's input, it wouldn't be ours. I, I mean, I could suggest it, but I can't. I would have to, we would still have to take it to council to ask them to direct Pat Cab to either have a special meeting or to include us into the, the next to look into it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
I can't vote on this until I get more information, period. So, I mean, whether we do a work session and invite folks that are on Pat Cab, or we get more information, we just heard a small bit from the committee, and then we have people saying that we don't, they don't feel they're properly notified. I think we need to postpone it at least a month till we can have a work session on it and get more information, because I, I don't have the information needed to make a call on this.
Any other comment on the postponement till the first meeting in October? October 5th? Roll call vote, please.
Verhe?
Yes.
Swan?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Ambrosiani?
Yes.
Eklund?
Yes.
Resolution 202114 has been postponed to October 5th.
Thank you. At this time, that takes us to our second item for public hearing. Resolution 2021015 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska, granting a conditional use permit to Jared Groom to operate a boat repair and boat and RV storage business on Lot AT Forest Acres subdivision located at 2607 Diamond Boulevard within a rural residential zoning district. At this time, I'll open public hearing.
Madam Chair, I believe everybody's left the line, so I'm going to hang up.
Thank you.
Is anybody else there?
And can you move the mic back to the public hearing podium? I don't see the applicant in the room, so I, I, I don't see him to call him to speak or ask questions of him, but did anyone sign in under public hearing on this item?
Madam Chair, we have Carol Griswold.
Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Carol Griswold, City Limits, busy meeting. Residential housing remains a huge issue for Seward. The need for housing is much greater than the need for boat repair and boat and RV storage in a residential zone. The city has spent a lot of time and money to support residential developments. It is inconsistent policy to allow commercial development on a residential lot. The location of another boat repair and storage use on an adjacent lot zone resource management is not a good reason to allow yet another such use on a lot zoned rural residential. The adjacent homes are not similar to the described, quote, "very large garages with small apartments on top in order to store their boats and RVs," unquote. The single-family, one-story log home immediately to the south has been there since 1960. The applicant's single-family, one-story home to the southwest was built in 1982. Indeed, this lot is in an older section of Forest Acres with traditional, single-family homes. Boat repair, maintenance, and storage is already allowed outright in auto-commercial, harbor-commercial, industrial, and by permit in resource management. This business should be cited in the zones reserved for this use. Furthermore, boat repair, maintenance, and storage is not even allowed in a rural residential zone outright or by CUP in our land uses-allowed table. Why is this even being considered? Please vote to protect our residential zones for residential housing and deny this application. Thank you.
So, anyone else signed in to speak on this item?
No, ma'am.
All right, I'll close public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a I think I have to have the motion, yeah.
I will make a motion till we approve Resolution 2021-015. Or did I get it wrong, 211016?
15 is correct.
No, it's on the wrong page.
Motion by Swan, second by Verhe. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair, as with all CUPs, I'm going to have to read all the conditions also, so I'll give you the background and then move forward through the additions. Jared Groom has applied for a conditional use permit from the City of Seward Planning and Zoning Commission to operate a boat repair and boat storage, RV storage business on his property located at 2607 Diamond Boulevard, Lot AT, in the Forest Acres subdivision. Seward has seen a major increase in the number of people who have used the Seward Harbor and store their boats in Seward. In 2020, the Smith Boat Yard was completely full and did not have any additional space for storing boats. The use of boats recreationally and commercially while only continued in Seward as more improvements are made to both harbors. There is a definite need for additional boat storage. The surrounding areas and zoning is the development requirements. The proposed structure for the business meets the zoning code development required in Table 1510220, including lot coverage, minimal lot, build site and height develop, or sorry, building development. The structure that will be built on the property is located within the 20-foot yard setback and the 10-foot setback adjacent property. The flood plain status is according to the FEMA insurance rate, there is not, it is not located in a flood plain hazard area. Utilities, there are sewer, water, and power are available to the property. Adequate fire, police, and solid waste disposal services are available to the property. City Code also requires that every building or building site within the city must provide containers suitable for refuse collection. All containers shall be watertight and animal-proof, with an animal-proof lid. Parking, one parking space for each 1,500 square feet of gross floor area, but not less than three spaces as required for warehouse slash storage businesses. And individual parking spaces meet the requirement for boat and RV parking, which would require for, which would be required for each boat or RV stored on the property. Our comprehensive plan does list the economic base of encouraging the development of infrastructure, expansion plans for the currently undeveloped residential and commercial property, encourage prudent management of resources for healthy commercial and sport fishing industries, and promote expansion and development of local marine entrepreneurship businesses. Staff report, we did send out notices to all departments. The building department stated that they would need to meet all adopted code requirements for commercial use. Fire department had no comment, public works department had no comment, harbor department had no comment. Police department stated that the building must locally adopt the fire and building codes, and the electric department asked that they are requiring the 811 locates. Property owners within 300 feet of Lot AT Seward, or Forest Acres subdivision were notified and this proposed conditional use permit signs were posted on the property. At the time, we've received no public inquiries. And then to go through what the conditional use specifically states, according to Seward City Code 1510320D, the commission shall establish a finding that uses satisfies the following conditions prior to granting a conditional use permit. A, the use of the is consistent with the purpose in this chapter, the Seward zoning code, and the purposes of the Seward, or the zoning district. The finding, the applicant lives adjacent to the property that is currently operating a boat, in, are, operating a boat, storage and repair business. The neighborhood property is zoned resource management, the purpose of which is dedicated as lands which are generally undeveloped and cannot be precisely zoned due to the inadequate information on the extension of public services and the stability of the land to support commercial, residential, industrial, or public uses and other possible environmental considerations, 155025. It's, resource management district is a placeholder until the city can adequately identify what should be, it should be zoned as. So, it is not to be appropriate for the, so it would not be appropriate for the applicant to rezone his property to resource management. Likewise, would not be appropriate for the applicant to rezone his property to auto-commercial, which allows boat storage and upright, outright, because this would have, would have, sorry, because this would be spot zoning. The long-term use of the area should be maintained as rural residential. However, stated in the definition of rural residential, it states that the uses other than residential much, use as much to be of appropriate scale and design complementary to the neighborhood character, 15525. Not only does this adjacent property, the adjacent property to the applicant already operate a similar business, but many of the homes that are built in this area have been constructed on very large, with very large garages and small apartments. The value of the adjoining property will not significantly be impaired. Findings, this condition has been met. The neighboring properties to the north and east are zoned resource management. Likewise, the property to the east already operates a boat storage and repair business. The properties to the south are zoned rural residential, or sorry, are zoned rural residential, and the properties to the east are zoned rural residential and owned by Fogneck Lodging Division of Kobyak Lumber. There is no indication that the development will negatively impact the value of those adjoining properties. This purpose is in harmony with the comprehensive plan. The findings, the condition has been met. The proposal is in harmony with the 2020, or 2030 comprehensive plan and the strategic plan of 1999. The comprehensive plan, as I stated before, is the economic base. It encourages infrastructure expansions for currently undeveloped residential and commercial properties. It encourages the prudent management of resource for healthy commercial and sport fishing industries, and it promotes expansion and development of the local marine entrepreneurial businesses. The strategic plan promotes the improvement and expansion of marine facilities. Public services and facilities are adequate to serve the purpose. This condition has been met. Adequate water, sewer, and power are available to the property as well as adequate fire, police, solid waste disposal services. The proposed will not be harmful to the public safety, health, or welfare. The findings of this condition have been met. The property has significant space to safely operate the proposed business, and there is no more than, and there is more than adequate accessibility to the main road so that boats and RVs are not being driven through neighborhoods. Any and all specification, specific conditions deemed necessary by the commission to fulfill the above-mentioned conditions shall be met by the applicant. These may include, but are not limited to, the measures relative to access screening, site development, building design, and operation of the use, and other similar aspects related to the proposed use. Based on the findings and conclusions, the approval of the CUP shall be subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall work with the city staff through the building permit process to address and accomplish any required upgrades or modifications. Prior to operation, the following shall be completed per International Building Code or IFC and International Fire Code, or sorry, International Building Code IBC and International Fire Code IFC. The applicant shall work with utility departments for any possible upgrades to water, sewer, and/or electric utilities prior to certificate of occupancy being issued. All parking and maneuverability shall remain on-site for the life of its use. Fair-proof slash bird-resistant containers shall be provided for all garbage and refuse for the life of its use. Per Seward City Code 1510325F, an approved CUP shall lapse six months from the date of the approval if, for which the use has not been implemented or a building permit has not been obtained. The commission may grant a six-month extension upon finding that circumstances have not significant, changed significantly since the date of the initial permit. Modification of final approval of a conditional use permit may, upon application by the permit be modified by the Planning and Zoning Commission. A, when changes of the conditions cause the conditional use to no longer conform to the standards for its approval. B, to implement a different development plan conforming to the standards of its approval. And C, the modification plan being subject to a public hearing and is finally be set by the city Seward, the city council resolution. Section two, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the proposed use subject to the above conditions satisfies the criteria for granting a conditional use, provided the conditions listed in section one, some sections A through F, are met by the applicant and authorizes administration to issue a conditional use permit to operate a boat repair and boat RV storage business at 2607 Diamond Boulevard, Lot AT Forest Acres subdivision. Section three, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that adherence of the conditions of this permit to be paramount in maintaining the intent of the Seward City Code 1510320 conditional use and authorizes the administration to issue the conditional use. Additionally, the administration shall periodically confirm that these, that the use conforms to the standards of its approval. That is all I have.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, Commissioner Swan.
So, I'm quite mixed on this. I'm, I'm actually believe that the properties along, I mean, we have resource management, the properties around Dick Craft Boulevard are resource management, but I do think there currently is enough information on how that area is developing to actually have it rezoned as auto-commercial or something similar to that. And that leads me to, this property is one away from that, which kind of leads me to go that direction. On the other hand, kind of like Third Avenue where you have your properties right on the road are commercial-oriented, which is a buffer- which is a buffer commercial orientation. And right behind that, you start going into actual residential, which this property lines up into, you know, would then be more residential, which leads me to think that maybe this isn't the best use for the property. And I'm, I'm not sure that I agree that the properties to the south would not be affected by this requested use of the property. And I don't think that the fact that there's a lot of houses that have, large houses with large personal garages is the same as a full storage area plus a repair facility. So I personally am kind of leaning both directions, and I'd like to hear what the other council members feel.
Okay, I'll go to the second next, Commissioner Sullivan, did you have any comments?
What I was looking at was, there is surrounding businesses similar to what he's proposing. So it's already established in that area. And if it meets code fully, this, as Director Wild was saying, I don't know if we have a whole lot of options otherwise. But I, I don't see that it's going to significantly impact the area beyond what it already has been.
Commissioner Sees, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I, across the street from it, there is a very large building and parking for vehicles or boats. It's not going to obstruct anybody's view of anything. I, I would probably, what my question was going to be before I saw it here was that, how, how big is that piece of ground? Two acres, 10 acres, five acres, do we know?
Standby.
Standby.
There's a map of it on 28.
Yeah, page 20.
Point nine two.
Not quite an acre?
Point nine two.
Not even an acre.
Yeah, right here.
So how many, how in the world would you find less than an acre of ground, build a storage unit and park any number of boats?
He's got this right here. Okay, Commissioner.
But anyway, I kind of have to agree with.
Madam Chair, I just want to point out that I have pulled up the interactive Kenai Peninsula Borough with new imagery, just so that the council or the commission can see. So this is the property adjacent to it. So this is the one that's in question. They have built a large storage unit right here that houses RVs and boats, as well as a big shop right here. So that's not included in your packet. We had it zoom in, so we lose that 2020 imagery.
But that's zoned resource management.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
So anyway, what, I, I can see no harm in having a big building and we keep it, you know, there's, there's only so many boats or storage units that they can put on that piece of ground. And it just relates to the people across the street from them. So, anyway, I'm favorable.
Commissioner Ambrosiani, did you have some comments?
Just a question for administration. What, what was the use that you ended up defining this with? Is there a defined use?
Boat storage and RV storage.
Boat storage, okay.
Commercial. It would be a commercial use, I mean, because he's renting out the locations, but.
On the, on the use table, what, what's it come under?
It, well, this is rural residential. There is no, it's not outright and it's not conditional use permit.
Right, that's right, because he's also doing repair.
Yep.
Right, boat storage, boat repair, neither of them have, that it's allowed by conditional use at this point in time.
Right.
So we shouldn't even be looking at it?
Correct.
And, and the reason it was brought forward is because previously, commission has asked that all CUPs be brought forward, so we have brought them forward to you.
Thank you.
I.
But wouldn't you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Commissioner Ambrosiani.
But why would, why would the community development staff recommend this, knowing that it's, it's not allowed in rural residential?
Well, with the applicant, it was, you know, do the rezone, which we did offer the rezone, but through a conditional use permit gives them the ability for you to approve for them to use it in the same aspect that's across the street, whether it would be resource management or not. So we brought it forward as conditional use because he's less than an acre, and if he rezoned, it would be considered spot zoning. And if we, if we just said no, then, you know, I, I'm just going to put it out there. There's a lot of things that are being built and done, but we find out later on. And so he's taking the extra steps to say, this is what I really would like to do. How do I do it? And if I brought forward a rezone, the first thing that we would be said by anybody was that we were spot zoning.
Commissioner Verhey?
Um, I guess I just had questions for the owner, kind of of like the repair, of having like that kind of industry in a more rural area. But I also kind of see it as favorable since there is already that boatyard and storage across the street.
Before I open it back up for the commission again, is there repair across the street? I mean, like with toxic fiberglass fumes? I, I don't know what, all boat storage and repair.
Well, it depends, I mean, he does, you know, he does grinding and everything else there. So it depends on what they're repairing. I mean, we've seen a little bit of everything out there.
So, um, the other thing that comes to my mind is that we are, we have had on our work session that we are going to review and recommend changes to the land use allowed table. So I, I, I would like to take that into consideration when we do the land use allowed table and look at what other areas in town are zoned rural residential. And then, um, put out the conditional use permit in, in that little box. And, and so the people within 300 feet?
We had no notification. We did send out notifications, we sent out letters, but we had no pushback.
Communication?
Yeah.
And this was posted and everything was done, right?
Absolutely.
But it is not allowed by code at this time?
Correct.
Go ahead, Commissioner Swan.
I think you really hit the points, and I guess I was waffling on trying to get there before, but I think you hit it, because I think for us, I don't think we can go forward with this. However, I think exactly what you said. I do believe there's a corridor going along Dick Craft that should be zoned differently. And that would probably solve this issue. And we are working towards that with our, you know, looking at the land use. So, I mean, at this point in time, I, I can't see, I, I don't think, I don't think we have the eligibility to, to grant a CUP. I'm not against his ideas, and I think there's a way to solve that. Either by doing multiple properties in the area all at the same time to get a auto-commercial, or when we look at this whole area, get input from the residents in the area specifically as a full group on the whole length of Dick Craft Road. But at this point in time, I don't think I could vote for this in any way.
I just have a question. Dick Craft Road and then the long line that goes to east-west, is that where the borough or the UA?
This property?
No, um, west of Dick Road, west, uh, I'll, I'll move. Is this land right up here, Borough?
University of Alaska.
Okay, it's University of Alaska. Okay, I'm just seeing how far we, we have rural residential in that area.
And we own, we own, the city of Seward owns this parcel and this parcel. So these two parcels are owned by the city.
That little triangle?
This triangle is part of the University of Alaska. And then this is also the University of Alaska across the street.
Okay.
These, this is zoned rural residential, these two. I mean, all of this area is, but the two that the city owns are rural residential. Then if, as you move forward this way, you know, this is all resource management. These are all zoned resource management because we don't have a definition or a current need to rezone them.
The, between the river and the road?
Yep, all, all of these properties here, this, that's owned by the city, this that's owned by the state, and, um, all along to here. This is not resource management, but this property here is, and the property across the street is.
I just, it, it goes to, it, it's involved in this, that's why I asked, because I too, if, if SMIC is, boat storage is full and every other boat storage is full, and we keep having, I mean, I want people to come here and enjoy the water and get a boat. But I think this would be a good business and, um, but I, I, it's, it's not allowed by code right now.
And Madam Chair, you guys, you can, I mean, I, I also, because we need to bring all conditional use permits to you. So any conditional use permit that we bring, we're going to say we recommend because we need your guys' input. We could postpone this to a date uncertain. And when code changes, maybe allow them to bring it back, or us bring it back?
Yeah, you've done the whole, you've done all the information and then.
And, and, you know, then as we're working through the land use table, you know, I've always said there's certain areas that the reason we want a conditional use is so it comes in front of the commission. So it might be an area, like you said, to add to see.
The other piece of that is we see a lot of boats in town, in the front yards and on the sides of roads because there's not a place to store them.
Can I make another comment when you're done, Ted?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I kind of tried to be a fair person. And across the street is exactly what he wants to do on his property. Build a big building, park a bunch of stuff. You know, the guy across the street can do it without any argument in this room. Why in the heck can't he do it on there, so?
Because this is zoned resource management and is allowed the conditional use.
So this is not zoned the same as across the street?
No, no, the, and by conditional use, resource management, the person that did that came forward and asked for a conditional use quite a few years ago. And since it was okay by code, was allowed. But right now, boat repair maintenance and storage is not allowed in rural residential. So what we can do is change what's allowed in rural residential when we finally get to the review and recommended changes to the land use allowed table.
I'm trying to convince you.
I am trying to convince you, but it's just the facts, man.
And another reason we didn't, we didn't volunteer for him to do the rezone is not just because of spot zoning, but because if the future, if we go by the future land use, that didn't change. That's never been something that, so that, you know, that, that's that catch 22. Like, we, we want to help them, we want to help them succeed and do good things, but we can't with the future land use. So if we're going to do the table, work on the table, I, I again see a reason for us to postpone it and bring it back. We won't make him pay the additional fee because this is, we bring back the same thing once the, the change has been done and approved.
Well, I'd like to make that motion that we postpone Resolution 2021-016, uncertain.
Is it 1-6?
I think it's 1-5.
It's 1-5.
Oh, yeah.
Or 1-4. I see 1-4 on this, and in the agenda, I see 1-5. But on page 24, it says 1-5.
Excuse me, 2021-015.
Did you say until brought back by staff?
Until uncertain.
Till uncertain, okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. So, any further discussion on the motion to postpone until time uncertain? Let's ask for a roll call vote.
Ambrosiani?
Yes.
E, I'm sorry, Cease?
This is for what?
To postpone it.
Until we bring it back, no. Sullivan?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Verhey?
Yes.
Chair Eklund?
Yes.
Postponing until a date uncertain is passing per.
Okay. That takes us to item nine, new business on our agenda. And one is Resolution 2021-012 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Seward, Alaska, recommending the city council amend portions of the Seward City Code, 1510-140 definitions and 1510-226, land use is allowed to change, update, and accommodate the wishes of the public. And we'll have a staff report, please. Wait, we'll have a motion first.
A motion.
Move to approve?
A motion to approve. 2021-012.
Second.
Motion by Ambrosiani, second by Sullivan. And now we'll have a staff report.
Madam Chair, as everyone knows, we've had multiple work sessions discussing the development and changes to, sorry, dwellings, lodging, and housing definitions. Just to name a few, we had them in April, or sorry, in May of 2020, October of 2020, December of 2020, January of 2021, May of 2021. And then we addressed it at the last meeting briefly, to bring it forward. And we had a work session this evening, which would be 7:00, 2021. We are responding to the concerns and requests that we've had over the years regarding short-term rentals and the mass amount of definitions and, and need to make it easier for the public as well as the building department and fire department, the community development departments. We are trying to condense the way that we look at our definitions so that they are more in line with the IFC and the IBC codes. The changes are in your ordinance, in your packet. We do have some wordy amendments that we took from the la, from our work session. And when we get to it, if you'd like, I can take them into section right now for approval, or if you want to do amendments one at a time.
I think we can do them mass, but we should get someone to move, to approve the amendments as read by our community development director.
I would like to make a motion that we amend Resolution 20.
Ordinance?
It's our resolution.
It's our resolution.
Yeah.
Resolution 2021-012. And make amendments en masse.
I'll second. All right. Sorry for the interruption. But we are recommending an ordinance going forward, and the changes are going to be to the ordinance, not to the resolution, so we can hear what they are.
And, and just as clarification, we do have, our resolution references the ordinance. So these wordy amendments on page, or sorry, to add under number 44, or sorry, number 44, and let me cite the page.
Pages are all different.
Page 36.
In the packet?
In the packet. On page five of 12 of the ordinance, number four, or number 44, under housing unit, it has been requested to add the definition of substance abuse treatment facility. That definition would be a facility for the purposes of temporary or long-term inpatient treatment of victims of alcohol or drug use or addiction. inpatient treatment of victims of alcohol or drug use or addiction. Bear with me because I'm, my numbers are now backwards. Under, on page 39 of the packet, page 8 of 12 of the ordinance, under hosted lodging unit, it would be, we're, the commission is asked to change it to read hosted lodging unit and owner occupied, single-family resident dwelling, where the owner resides at the sleeping unit, or sorry, at the unit while it is being rented. A room or group of rooms in which sleeping accommodations are furnished for compensation or other services may be furnished by the owner or operator to any individual not a family member. A hosted lodging i, unit is limited to a home occupation within an owner occupied dwelling, which is the owner's principal place of residence, and the rental of not more than 50% of the bedrooms to a maximum of five. Then, um, on page 40, which is number 9 of 12 of the ordinance, uh, we had previously deleted number 4, we were asked to have that added back in. And then on page 41, which is 10 of 12 of the ordinance, number 7, we are removing letter A. And that is the wordy amendments that I have.
Thank you. At this time, um, I will open it for discussion. For the eighth time. Uh, Commissioner Swan has the maker of the motion, would you add, like to add anything?
I'm, would like to approve those amendments.
Okay, that's nice. Is there any other discussion by the commission?
I'll second that.
Yeah, okay. I think I'd like to call a roll.
Approving the amendments as read by administration. Ambrosiani?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Verhey?
Yes.
Chair Eklund?
Yes.
Your amendments have been approved.
Okay, this will go forward and be read at.
I need you to approve the resolution as amended.
Okay, um, now, on to the main motion. Resolution 2021-12. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing, none? No, we have some.
Did, did we, in those massive amendments, this is where I was trying to get confused, under the accessory structure.
Oh, we did not change the word building.
Correct.
That was just a housekeeping thing.
That's housekeeping, okay.
And then?
We deleted 7A.
Okay, we did, I'm trying to figure that, okay.
All right, okay, any further discussion on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Madam Chair, approval of the amended Resolution 2021-12, recommending the city council amend portions of the Seward City Code 1510140 and 1510226, land use is allowed to change, update, and accommodate. Ambrosiani?
Yes.
Verhey?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Eklund?
Yes.
That motion as amended, that resolution as amended has been approved.
Thank you, and when will the introduction of the ordinance be before council?
The introduction of the ordinance will be at the first meeting, or sorry, the second meeting of July. The July 26th meeting.
Great, thank you. All right, item 9B has been postponed until September 7th of 2021, and that takes us to three discussed developer reimbursement program in relation to Philip Zimmerman and Larry Harmon's application. And I'm gonna ask staff for a report on that.
So, um, as our current code states that, um, and just so everybody knows, administration knows that the code has some iffy areas. So we have been directed to work with the city manager to update that code. But as it sits right now, any developer reimbursement needs to have the approval from planning and zoning that it's a viable, um, project. So this, this memorandum, we're requesting for the city manager to move forward with the developer reimbursement program. Um, we are seeking the planning and zoning commission's approval for the city of, city manager to move forward with the developer reimbursement in relation to the applications received from Phil Zimmerman and Larry Harmon to construct utility infrastructure for future housing developments in Seward. The planning and zoning commission sees that it's a viable project because it supports the City of Seward comprehensive plan in the multiple areas. Um, 3, 2, 1, 2, expand the opportunities of affordable, diversified, round housing through appropriate land use regulations. 3, 3, 1, encourage development of new housing. 3, 3, 1, 1, support a range of housing choices that meet the needs of people in various income and age groups. 3, 3, 1, 2, create incentives to provide land for housing development within the City of Seward. And 3, 3, 1, 3, assess solutions to extend cost-effective utilities to homesites on land zone for residential development. Uh, we've brought this forward, there have been two applications. Previously at a meeting, um, Mr. Harmon's application was brought to planning and zoning, and the response was, we don't know, like, we don't, we don't agree to money. We don't, you guys don't, um, vote on how much should be spent. And that's one of the changes that we'll be making in the code for the developer reimbursement. Um, the developer reimbursement code, right now, states that it has to come, it goes to the city clerk, from the city clerk to the city manager, from the city manager as a recommendation from you that it's a viable property or a viable project. And then she reports it to the council. Um, council has made a developer reimbursement fund and are working through the process on that.
Thank you.
And, and just so everybody knows, Mr. Zimmerman's property is in association with the Gateway Subdivision, and Mr. Harmon's property is in association to his, um, Maple Street.
Okay, so at this time, you're looking for a motion that we, uh, believe that these two projects, the Zimmerman and the Harmon projects are viable?
Correct.
Okay, I will accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Zimmerman and Harmon projects as viable for potential reimbursement.
Nice, second.
Motion by Sullivan, second, by Cease, any discussion? Didn't both of these come before us as projects that we approved?
Yes, and that's, it's just, uh, the, the clarification. When we started this project, administration went one direction with developer reimbursement, and we went one direction with subdivisions, right? And so it got intertwined where they thought, well, planning and zoning needs to approve this, and I've been saying, well, we already did. It's already going.
Hopefully, we do it again, is there any more discussion?
I have a discussion, is a question, is, is, what is the, what is, is it a 50-50 thing?
Yes, um, well, the way it sets right now is it's up to 50%. Um, the new changes will be 50%. And there will be some slight changes instead of, um, you know, bringing the project and saying, here's the total, we've done it already. We're going to ask for them to bring the project like Mr. Harmon did. Here's what it's gonna cost me, I'm gonna pay it, and then the city pays, you know, the 50% back.
And is there a timeline on the payback as people, um, apply and get hooked up to the utilities?
So, um, the way that it works is the developer reimbursement fund has been funded by, um, right now, there's $500,000 in it, it was funded off of the NCL money that was received.
Norwegian Cruise Line?
So they started, um, the fund, but the way to regenerate it and add to it is by, through property taxes, through the sale of other city properties. We're trying to incorporate a way to encourage development instead of just land ownership. And then, um, I see in the future the possibility of just the city saying, okay, this year, we're going to add utilities from X to Z. And if this is what it's gonna cost, we put it in, and then the plan is, you know, we build it, they will come. Adding utilities to hopefully everywhere that needs them.
Well, I hope not all money from property sales goes into just, uh, utility reimbursement because in our municipal land plan, we have recommended that some of it goes into other areas.
Yeah, it's just a portion, they have it, you know, they have an infrastructure plan, uh,
Good.
those development type things.
All right, any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Approval that both Mr. Zimmerman and Larry Harmon's projects are.
Viable.
Viable. Swan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Verhey?
Yes.
Ambrosiani?
Yes.
And Chair Eklund?
Yes.
We will send that on to the city manager.
Okay, we're on item 9, 4, and that is to set a work session topic, topic for the July 20th, 2021, as the continue, or the beginning, review of the land use table in conjunction with heavy and light manufacturing.
But now we need to change that to the municipal land plan.
Yes, we do. The municipal lands plan, um, and it is a 6 o'clock start on our work session, and we like to be done in two hours, but we went a little over to finish the municipal lands plan one last time. I really want to get to, uh, the land use allowed table.
Can we, can we say that's part of it? And if we can zip through to the first, we'll get to that.
Yeah, we, we can, let's, let's add, because that's what our title's been. We just take off, review the housing definition.
Continue review, yeah.
Yes, and do you want it to start at 6, or do you want it to start early, or Madam Chair?
4. I already tried, this is better at 4, so I can do it better.
I think the earliest is 5:30.
Okay, so.
For those that work until 5.
Do you want 5:30?
5:30 would be fine, and, and that gives us two and a half hours, and maybe we will get to the land use allowed.
So we will.
We can always go a little over.
We will set a work session topic for July 20th, starting at 5:30. Continue review of the municipal land plan, and I won't, hopefully, review.
Yeah, and review of the land.
Review too. In conjunction with heavy and light manufacturing.
Thank you. All right, so that's that, and, um, 5 and 6 were on a consent agenda. 10, A, B, C, and D are informational items and reports, no action required. Is there anything you wanted to bring to our attention in those items?
No, Madam Chair.
Any questions the commission has on those four items? Okay, so I will go with commission comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Verhey.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry.
Commission comments is what it says, I, there's no 11 on my agenda.
Did you approve minutes?
We approved minutes by consent agenda?
Commission comments on above, and then it's citizen comments, and then it's commission and administration.
Okay, well, I, I was at commission comments, but that's number 12, is there a number 11 on my?
Uh, apparently not.
And we approved it that way.
And we approved it this way, so we're gonna go with commission comments, and then citizens, and then commission, and, then we get to respond to those citizens, so we get a couple of times. Commissioner Verhey?
Um, yeah, good meeting, glad we've made some progress, there's still a lot to do, it's very exciting. Um, good work, admin, lots of luck, appreciate you, and that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
I'll leave it this time, I'll go to later one.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Ambrosiani.
Uh, just echo it, Commissioner Verhey said, thank you.
Commissioner Cease?
Yeah, I'll reinforce your comments, it's, I'm really proud of Jackie and Courtney coming along. Yeah, it's good, I wouldn't want your workload personally.
Vice Chair Swan?
I have no comment.
But you don't.
And I, um, apologize that I did not read, uh, my emails today. Uh, I did this morning before I went to work, and I didn't get to them after that. And, uh, I really am happy for the public that came tonight. Um, always appreciate public comments at our meetings. And, um, I hope that your printing load will be lightened soon, um, and the stacks at my house will be lessened because I keep them for a while. And, um, it's just, you're doing a great job with our meetings, and I, I know that you have the community development stuff on your plate as well, but we love.
We demand, we, we demand the most.
Yeah, we like, yeah. We're, we're, we have big mouths, so, uh, at this time, I will move on to, uh, 13 citizens' comments, and I will ask if there's anyone in the meeting room that would like to speak. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, Bob.
Okay, Weltonville. I, I just want to thank you all for your service, because it, I know it's, I, I just think you do a great job, just, I haven't been here in a couple of years, planning commissioner. It's, uh, good work, you know. On, on the airport thing, you know, it's hard to sit here on this side of things when you don't get to talk, when, what you hear, you guys do, there's information that you need to have, and you're not able to hear both sides, because what that project is, is an entirely new runway. Has nothing to do with the existing short runway. It's in a completely new location, parallel to it, that intersects the long runway, too far down to save the long runway. So it's filling wetlands from end to end. And what they were leading you to believe is extending an existing runway, which is not the case. So, um, I, you know, I just want to reiterate about the public process. It went on and on, and there was time to do it any which way. We could've got the approvals to build up the runway from the river. It's not like we're dredging the river, we need the material from somewhere. And riprap it, pave it, and put new lights in it. And they were only gonna pay for 3,200 feet, well, that would cover the part of the runway that's failed. So it could be done. And we would have a 1,200-foot-long runway. Which, we had one air service come over here from Kenai, made the trip twice to test it. And he said he wouldn't come in here with a loaded plane on that length of runway. And he came here because he wanted to do business here. We've got a town that is rapidly developing tourism industry, which I think we ought to probably, I, that airport's come a long ways in the last five years. We got three helicopter operators, I mean, COVID didn't help. There, Soldot owns their own airport, Parma owns their own airport, Wausau owns their own, it's not like communities don't. I think Seward has the capability to make a profitable attempt at that. And if we allow this runway configuration to happen, you couldn't ever make a payoff. It's kind of like, we have to either do something now, or deliver it forever. And I just care. Care about everything around here for a long time, that's why I'm involved. I really just think it, it's a mistake for us to let this happen. So, thanks for giving us the time. I hope maybe we can get the conversation around to where everybody's on, completely get up to speed. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And at this time, commission and administration response to citizens' comments. And I'll, uh, go, Commissioner Verhey?
No, go ahead, you can leave.
Commissioner Verhey, did you have any?
Uh, no, I appreciate your input, Bob, there was a lot, yeah, that we don't know, so.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I did over that because I was not really aware of what was going on, and I spent a lot of time down at the airport as well. And it's, uh, did not know that second part was, they were gonna dig up a whole new one and not just add, that's, that's sort of, yeah. Need more information.
Nobody on our side, on the local side of the public process, ever supported that.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Commissioner Ambrosiani?
Just thanks, Bob, we appreciate your, your input, it helps a lot.
Commissioner Cease?
I appreciate you spending four hours here along with us. It shows that you're dedicated to it.
Commissioner Swan?
Yeah, just appreciate cut, custom, you know, citizen comments, appreciate the efforts that everybody's put into that.
I still got a lot of mine in my phone book, too, so anybody wants to call me.
So, yeah, I, I hope that in the process, as it moves forward, everything's transparent, and we know what's going to happen out there. And yes, maybe we don't have as much input as the council, and the council's supposed to hear from Department of Commerce, but I just don't know enough, it's not transparent enough for me at this time to make a decision. Administration, do you have response?
Madam Chair, I would just like to say that I will include it in my next CMR to ask the council to allow us to either call a special meeting with PACAB and/or send information to PACAB so that they can get some review back. I do think that they, there aren't a hiatus, but I think that if, if needed be, the council can request that they have a special meeting. So I will put that in my next CMR for a request from the council.
Okay. We'll see how they feel about that. All right. And at this time, unless there's any additional comments from the commission, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.